Yeah, it'll be interesting.
Yeah. All right, it's six o'clock, time to call the orders. The Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission meeting tonight. At this time, I'd ask you to stand and Ken and I will do the indication and John Hunter is going to do our pledge.
Let's pray. Here in the Father, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come here tonight. Father, we pray that decisions be made here be for the interest of the citizens of Mount Pleasant and for the city of Mount Pleasant. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pray that the nation through the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where Jesus stands, one nation, not forgot, indivisible, with a clean and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. As our minutes reflect, we, all our commissioners, were in attendance tonight. Item number three on our agenda is approval of agenda tonight.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item number four, approval of meeting minutes from prior meeting, October the 12th, 2021.
I make a motion, we approve those minutes?
I have a motion.
Say.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Number five, plat approval?
There are none, sir.
Number six, rezoning request?
There are none.
Number seven, annexation request?
There are none.
Number eight, site plan request. At this time, I'll turn it to you, Robert.
Yes. Commissioner being present tonight. Uh, the site plan request before you tonight is PC dash eleven zero nine two one. S P, the owner, Mr. Johnny Potts, has submitted a site plan of progress to property locations held by South Partner Act. Purpose of this request is to support development and construction on a 7,500 square foot structure, square foot addition to existing structure on the property, as well as construction of that 4,032 square foot structure to accommodate business needs of Cali Container. Uh, I've included in the board's packet, uh, also to the participants, likely the applicants, the board, and their, um, um, comments, staff comments, that I hope y'all had a chance to review. Um, we've got the site plan, um, it's actually up, um, tonight for y'all to see. We can discuss some of these items, um, if y'all want to, based off of the, um, comments that you had. And we've got Will, the president, not most of the others, Mr. Johnny Potts, I think is present, as well as engineers, Mr. Roots, uh, in the audience, and they'll be having the entertaining questions they have specifically for them. But I'll start by going to the staff comments if y'all.
What's mine?
Um, proposed parcel, um, one of the staff comments, proposed parcel is not spilling case, nineteen point oh eight acres, where as all of the sheets identified property is nineteen oh nine, so clerical error, uh, and since corrected, uh, on the site plan, um, it is indeed nineteen point oh nine acres, total parcel. Um, also, um, all pages of the site plan initially came in, I had the correct to selling as of our current zoning, uh, indicated on the site plan that has since been changed. The old zoning is still within, um, but new zoning has been added to reflect current zoning. Uh, one of our questions to the engineer, are the easements indicated recorded? Do the various utility providers agree with these buffers? If you look at the, if you look at the, um, okay, if you look at the bottom of the sheet right here, the note that is reflected by the engineer's comments, as a reply back to our, our initial comment, easements are surveyed and activated based on, and then we're recorded after approved. Uh, Mount Pleasant Planning Commission. All right, so the easements were concerned to us, um, because no reported flat, uh, nor location of a recording for those particular easements was shown on the site plan. And reason it paying attention greater to us is in relation to the proposed building B and the proposed addition. Um, A, being too close in proximity to the designation of building to the guys for show. So we asked that the, that question, get Mr. President. I've looked at this over, over again, and I think Mr. Rager's had an opportunity to look at what's indicated on the site plan. He would have drawn the version, actually, I believe. All right, so, um, this is my interpretation of the site plan. We can stick to this as well. Um, so you, you've got two gas lines that run here, uh, showing this, this one E, you've got these ten foot gas. You've got two of these in the four inch there. Proposed building B in relation to that easement was of particular concern. It's required to be a minimum of ten foot outside of the easement. The engineer has shown, I take this to be an outside boundary line for where the easement actually starts. Where the easement actually starts. So he's got ten foot indicated here. Um, I'm just, once again, I'm just guessing that this is an outside boundary to an easement. Uh, we've got ten foot shown here and then an additional three foot, seven inches, shown to almost the corner of the proposed building B, which would, in essence, if I'm looking at that correctly, put it about fifteen feet outside of the outside boundary line. I know that to be a hundred percent accurate, because it's outside boundary line, that's where it is, D, uh, in regard. If you take a look at the proposed building A, uh, he's showing ten foot from the water line, um, that is present, uh, from about the corner of the building, uh, all the way to, I don't know if that's the center line or the starting of, um, for the outside edge of the water line. I'm not too concerned about the proposed building A, it's more, more for the proposed building B, in relation to where those gases are. Now, uh, the note that was indicated on there, I just read it out, you know, that this, uh, these easements have been surveyed, I haven't seen a copy of that particular survey, so I'm guessing that, you know, the engineer has that forthcoming, the plantation, or I may not be able to answer that. Quick, I miss you, Bill. So right now, the way it's standing, it appears that it's outside the outside boundary line of the easement. Um, now whether or not that easement is recorded, I don't have complete knowledge. Uh, we did have public works, uh, one of the, uh, employees of public works actually went out and dug up the gas line in relation to where this building is going to be set, and he, I think he had a conversation with the owner, who was down there on site. Um, and I think public works is here, representative of public works here, speak tonight and do that, if y'all have any questions for him. But I believe after conversation with Mr. McCaffrey, public works director, that they are satisfied that the building is outside of the two and four inch gas line. Uh, enough to be, that is about replaced outside of it.
We're talking about the building B.
Building B, that's correct, yes, that's the only part of the portion A that I acknowledge, but this is, uh, and, um, I don't want to speak to Mr. McCaffrey, but that's the conversation that we did have, that it was satisfactory to him in relation to building knowledge by our public works department where the gas line was, in relation to the proposed building B being set, and then the plans that are shown, uh, where, uh, where I believe that that's a boundary line.
If it's all right, w- w- can we let, uh, Keith speak, public work department, and then, uh?
Yes, sir, that's, I'd much rather him speak than that as well.
How you doing?
Ma'am.
We order you to.
Hello, Mr. Keith.
How you doing?
Are you satisfied that, that?
Yes. Uh, my locator, which is also my gas line, went out and dug up both the gas line and the water line to verify the location fiction.
Right.
So you're satisfied with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, that's what we need to hear.
Thank you.
About to go on to say that I spoke, uh, had a conversation with engineer for Mount Pleasant Power as well, in relation to these easements, they find the plan satisfactory outside.
Right.
Uh, as well, so, uh, he could be here tonight, taking my word for it.
Oh, yeah.
Conversation, Mr. McCaffrey, uh, engineer for our system. Um, we'll move on to the next comment, if you, if you, unless, one question, we're just doing, we're doing that.
Mm, good.
Next comment, existing structure is a legal non-conforming building, that's existing structure. Um, it's legal non-conforming building approved in the previous zone. As such, it may be expanded by the non-conforming statute. But the utility is not being approached, and we've discussed that detail. Proposed building B, I want you to go over that next section, so we can discuss that. Um, they indicate on that, that particular, um, comment, no encroachment resolved by the previous one easement. And that's what I was trying to offer to y'all. Um, the very next comment, proposed building B is located within the fifty foot required setback. As proposed. We asked that there were going to be a variance request before zoning deals. It hasn't been indicated on this middle. So in essence, where proposed building B sits within the fifty foot setback. The fifty foot setback is established when we updated zoning ordinance in 2018, and it applies not only to light industrial, it applies to heavy industrial. So whether you're in a heavy industrial zone or a light industrial zone, same setbacks apply. That's fifty foot all the way around that property. Um, in our old zoning text, in light industrial, you had, um, input, or in M1, what we call it, M1, um, which I think this property was situated in, um, you had ten foot setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think they might have been habitable in M2 and M3. So, when we updated our zoning ordinance, uh, we went through the fact that industrial, regardless, and nothing against industrial, but in industrial settings, that can add to, um, possible nuisance uses that could affect other properties. The fifty foot setback was set in place both for heavy industrial and light industrial. But we offset that by allowing a large array of permitted uses in both zones. So, instead of trying to dictate each piece of property with different setbacks in relation to their use, we allowed more uses, both in, in light industrial and the heavy industrial, but we also included the fifty foot setback. So offset any possible nuisances that could be caused by property in relation to adjacent property. This building, proposed building B, is actually situated inside that fifty foot setback. Um, not always there has not been a variance request, uh, has not crossed my desk. I don't know if that will be forthcoming after this meeting. Uh, I haven't spoken with the owner or the engineer in relation to that, but their reply back to, um, us is that they have a, a legal representative here tonight that's wanting to first that view, we're putting in your patent, a copy of the letter that sent by a legal representative division speaking right to the court. Um, and he laid out his interpretation of non-conforming waste drive. We also have a legal representative for the city, if you're not getting a little, uh, be glad to give her interpretation, um, this is, this is. Um, if you want me to stop right there and let that, if you, or go to the other comment.
Let's, let's, let's hear legal, this permit form right here.
This is Mr. George Dean, uh, how you doing?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Uh, he's a representative, uh, from Mr. Johnny Potts, he's present in the office, uh, he is, uh, I'll let, I'll let him give, give, give a little background on himself, I think most planning officials.
Yep.
How do you do, Mr. Dean?
How everybody doing?
Good, bye.
That's good. Uh, Mr. Archibald said, um, George Dean, I do a lot of this kind of land use and zoning work, kind of, uh, work out in Nashville. Mr. Potts called me about this and, and, uh, really, I guess what I, is just talk a little bit about the, what I call the non-conforming property statute here in Tennessee. It's found that, uh, Tennessee Code of Etiquette is 13 dash seven dash two or eight. And I know those numbers because I use it so often, that, uh, you wouldn't think that the Non-Conforming Property Act, some obscure statute would come into play in so many cases, uh, but it, a lot of the zoning cases would come up, that they had an impact, uh, for one reason or another. Uh, it was adopted back in 1972, um, they expanded 208 to include these provisions. And it's kind of a crazy statute, if I, if you don't mind my saying that. Uh, in, in a lot of ways, the, it's a little less commonsensical than what you would hope to have. The idea behind it was that, uh, a non-conforming use, and every state in the country allows this, that a non-conforming use can stay. Um, but when they started, started doing zoning in the 1920s and 30s, there was a real concern that, uh, if there was a non-conforming use and you changed the zoning, that the, uh, notoriety would order that use leave, to get out of there. Well, of course, that never happened, and most of the states across the country, including Tennessee, adopted statutes to protect, uh, existing, uh, uses on those properties. Uh, what most of the states didn't do is what Tennessee did in 72. Not only did Tennessee allow the uses to stay, but they also said, that's in subsection B, subsection C says, by the way, any commercial or industrial or business use can expand on the property. Uh, now, these properties, there's three of them, they've been used by Cali Containers since before the, uh, current zoning, I think before the zoning that he had before that. So it's legally non-conforming under the terms of the statute. And the statute says, under item C, not, B says you can stay, C says you can expand your facilities, so long as there's not any kind of nuisance created by the expansion. Um, in this case, what, uh, Cali Containers is asking to do is to expand the one building, uh, by adding onto it, and then add an additional building. And I think the city looks at it and says, well, um, you can't just build a new building and not comply with the setback. But that is exactly what the statute says, that you can construct additional facilities on the property, the non-conforming property, which these properties are. Um, the ten, fifty foot setback doesn't apply to the non-conforming property. There's not anything particular in the statute that talks about C with that regard, but with D, this, the other section, and again, Tennessee, very unusual, Tennessee also allows, um, a, a non-conforming, uh, owner to tear down all the facilities and start all over again. Most states in the country don't allow either C or D, because what they want to do is get rid of the non-conforming uses. And most, most places in Tennessee want to do the same thing, but the statute basically says, uh-uh, that can't do that. Uh, the idea originally was that ultimately, the facilities would get old, and the manufacturing use and the commercial use would have to go someplace else, because that's where they could build new. But the Tennessee statute, in fact, says, no, not only can you expand under C, not only can you stay under B, but under D, you can expand, you can tear down everything and start all over again. Now, the one caveat to D is that if you tear it all down, you've got a blank piece of, uh, land, and under D, then you do have to comply. Uh, under subsection I, it says, notwithstanding provisions of D, you've got to comply with the setback regulations. But as to C, that, so, that provision is not there. The, if you're just expanding, adding new buildings, there's no requirement under the statute to comply with the, uh, setback requirement. Um, uh, in one way, the statute makes good sense, and that is that, I think the Tennessee General Assembly, both in 72, and they've amended this several times over the years, the latest was around 2005, and was a, um, uh, gigantic, um, addition to the, the statute. But in one way, it's made sense all these years, and that is, Tennessee General Assembly just wants to protect owners of non-conforming properties. Uh, their, the Tennessee General Assembly's been determined to allow them to expand their uses, uh, not have to comply with the zoning regulations that ordinarily would, because they've been changed, they're non-conforming, they were there before the zoning regulations, and that's why the General Assembly has seemed fit to do this. Um, there's, there's some talk in the staff comments, Mr. Archibald, about, um, increasing the degree of non-compliance. And the problem with that is that that's a, that's a local requirement, and it doesn't, it, it has to fail in the face of the statute. Uh, Tennessee, uh, the, the city of Mount Pleasant, the city of Nashville, doesn't have the right to adopt zoning unless the city, uh, the state gives it to us. Uh, the thirteen dash seven dash one oh one et cetera, thirteen dash seven dash two oh one et cetera, do that. They give it, give the power to the counties and to the cities. But with strings attached, and one of those strings is the Non-Conforming Property Act, uh, section 208. Uh, so, i- in the, uh, increase of non-compliance, most cities have that, Nashville has it, uh, many of the jurisdictions that I work in have a provision that's similar to that, but it just doesn't apply in the context that we're talking about, because of the state statute. Uh, uh, a, a few years, many years ago, really, uh, nineteen seventy-five or seventy-six, uh, uh, Clarksville adopted a statute, uh, an ordinance that would, uh, give non-conforming users ten or fifteen years to, uh, wrap up their operations and go away. And there, there, a lot of states allow this to be done. Uh, the owner of the property sued Clarksville and said, hey, you know, the statute doesn't allow you to do that. Uh, I'm allowed to stay as long as I'm continuing the same business on this property. And ultimately, the Tennessee Court, Tennessee Court of Appeals looked at it and said, hey, you know, that's exactly right. So, uh, he has the right to stay, he has the right to expand, and as a non-conforming use, these both regulations, the setback regulations, just don't apply to the construction of new facilities on the property. Anyway, I'm glad to respond to any questions, but that, that's essentially the history of, uh, section 208. As I say, I use it many, many times, it, uh, comes in more cases than that. In fact, I think the case that, uh, is that the, the little folks that, uh, I was here for,
Yeah.
I think in part, some of that was, was, there's a legal non-conforming issue in that, uh, provision as well. Anyway, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to respond, uh, but I just wanted to kind of give you the background of the statute, and kind of our perspective on why we don't think we should have to comply with the fifty foot setback.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, I agree with Mr. Dean's interpretation of the statute. I also agree that he's the expert in that field. Um, I think we have factual disagreement, because my understanding is that there are multiple parcels, and that building B is on a different parcel that is, has not been historically used. And as, because it's a different parcel, you can't expand onto a different parcel. That's also part of that state statute that he was citing, it's a different section, I think section E. Um, and so what we've asked from Cali Container, from Robert's office multiple times, is proof that that property has been used. Um, and that's where it's not a, we're not having an interpretation problem, we're having a factual issue, and so I agree, if that property, if there's proof that that had been used, or something built there, it's used as, under the old zoning, then it can be expanded, but my understanding is it's an empty property, and then we're building a building for the first time now, and so it's not non-conforming, it's a new use. Um, and that's where we've kind of gotten this ongoing disagreement, but my understanding is that it's a factual disagreement, and if we could clear that up, we could have a different discussion, but we haven't been given information to do that yet.
My, Mr. Potts is here, to, I just, he could just kind of talk on how, how it's been used. Uh, let me say, it's not been used for building, but you don't have to have a building to have a non-conforming use. If you did, agricultural enterprises would never be non-conforming, quarries would never be non-conforming, uh, uh, landfills would never be non-conforming, you don't have to have a building, it just has to be used. This parcel, as I understand it, has been used part and parcel of, of the, uh, manufacturing process on the property. And Mr. Potts is here, he's the owner of the company, he'd be glad to, to implore you in about it.
We, we, we will, we'll get, we'll get to him in just a minute here, I want to get a little bit more discussion from Robert here, and, uh, we appreciate it. But he, Mr. Potts will be given ample time.
Thank you. Um, can we continue?
Yeah.
Can you comment?
Yeah.
At this point?
Okay.
Um, so, uh, moving on down the line, I believe, here, um, the next comment. Okay, so there was a sheet that was included in the original, uh, submission that wasn't applicable to Mount Pleasant Power, that was allocated in the comments, that sheet has since been removed.
Mm-hmm.
No, I already, I already documented these days, and that's been, that's been addressed as well. Um, we also, um, called out section eleven point two, off street parking of our zoning ordinance A1, existing facilities D, additions of more than twenty-five percent of the square footage of existing structures must comply with site development standards. We asked that the engineer and applicant identify parking facilities, number of parking spaces surfacing, and the mentioned parking spaces, and criminal landscape, compliance with ADA requirements must be addressed. Um, reply back, uh, in the show of the plan, too, if you look to the last page, I think it is. Um, reply back from the engineer, existing parking has been added to address this comment, now it's called ADA space added. Uh, and parking summary, any special parking statement having to add to the plan to address this item. So, moving down here to, it's going to be, it'll be L1. Close to the last page.
Last page.
L1 is the last page.
There we go, L1, okay. So he's got it pulling up here as well, so parking has been identified here. Uh, one, two, three, four, and then you've got additional spaces, um, bring that up just a little.
Between sixteen and seventeen.
Yeah, so, um, between sixteen and nineteen, nineteen, showing nineteen spaces. Um, there is a.
I see.
Yeah.
Was that the pool that he?
Not sure.
Interesting.
There's, 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 there's places that got cut off, or a burlow, and there's some.
Yeah, that, that's not on me.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah, it's not on there.
I got you, okay.
We only see.
We only see the.
From missing five through fourteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where's that? Four right there. The paint just got off my genlock. Okay. Hey, I had a hard time banging that last night, too.
So they are showing parking there, um, with an ADA spot, uh, there's, if you look at old flats associated with that property, that, I'm not for sure if that's a right of way, where they're showing one third floor, or if that's an easement to the property. Uh, because I was looking back at old flats, and I don't know if that actually belongs to, that. Um, and maybe that can, can speak to that, because right now, the way the parking is shown, on that old flat, it's ninety-seven, that I had access to, that's actually identified as a right of way.
Mm-hmm.
This whole area right there.
Yeah.
Because it's outside of property boundaries. Um, so that's a concern as well, uh, identifying required parking on adjacent property. Uh, I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not clear on that. And the only flat that I have that shows me anything indicates that that is a right of way, um, that's not associated with that property. Uh, but, once again, that can be took, maybe you can speak to that, but all, all the knowledge I have right now is what was shown on the old flat that I, I can cross. So, um, there has been landscaping that's been added, you can zoom that out. Landscape that added proposed building B on, uh, both sides facing public right of way, so we're using that as foundation landscaping. Um, and then I think there was some added additionally to the front of the existing building, or, you know, just along the right of way in relation to proposed building B. Uh, there is a gate there, on site, a gate there in that vicinity, so, uh, the only, um, landscaping requirement, uh, really out there was to, uh, do the foundation landscaping in relation to public right of way. Um, the, uh, The, it indicates L1. That comment in relation to the landscaping specifically, foundation plans are required for building B and building A addition. And the comment back from the engineer was in relation to L1, which is the page you're looking at, stating that they addressed this. The next comment is automatic irrigation systems are required on landscapes of commercial industrial districts. Land commission, straight on the zoning text, may waive automatic irrigation requirements for existing areas with existing vegetation. However, plant material planted within such areas to meet transitional requirements, but must be within one hundred feet of a hose build or to be provided, or provided a temporary above-ground irrigation system. And a note's been added, I believe, to the bottom of L1 in relation to irrigation. So if you look right here, right there. Land irrigation will not be automatic system in this case, will be provided by designated maintenance workers selected by. Allow final, right, those deals located in one hundred feet of area being irrigated, those deals locations above. So in essence, there's still some questions that I have in relation to site plans. Number one, I don't know if this is one parcel or three parcels. I haven't seen a flat to identify either. I viewed an aerial which is accessible by the public, for the county's tax system. At one point, in the initial submission of this, it showed three different parcels. I think Mr. Dean, after his turn, he alluded to the fact that it's three different parcels when he was speaking. Now, if you pull up the aerial, it shows one parcel. It hasn't been flat to substantiate a change from three parcels to one parcel. This was brought before my office. That's required by state law as well. Any change in a property being flatted and approved before the property can be used as one parcel versus three parcels. The, from the initial onset of our discussion with the applicant, not at this meeting, but prior meeting, they did have a surveyor, can't recall the gentleman's name, but Seber, that's correct, yes, thank you. He provided a plat, we provided comments to that plat. Never received any practical fact from Mr. Seber in relation to that. But it's never been recorded, it's never been brought before this board, it's never been approved, and to my knowledge, hasn't been approved. That's one question, is it three parcels or is it one? Is this a right of way where the parking is engaged, or is it associated with the natural property? I think they've made the most important landscaping requirements for where it is, where it's situated. I think it meets the foundation requirements of landscaping. I believe that the way the vendors are positioned and shown here, it sets factory to utility easements. But once again, there's still some lingering questions that my office has in relation to site plan. Just not having any, available. I apologize to the board, but those were supply and comments, and this is where they were addressed. So that, and is here, as well as the engineer, Mr. Hager from Agribusiness Associates is present. If you're all, if I'm supposed to bother with me or any of those parties that I just mentioned, I'd love to answer any questions. And I'm sure there is, I know that's, that is the lingering questions that I have on this staff in relation to this stuff.
Okay. At this time, we'll let Mr. Spott, Potts, excuse me, if you'd like.
Johnny Kishaner is still three parcels. Three parcels was used for Cali Container use since nineteen ninety-nine. He actually rented the, the third big parcel before he bought it in two thousand and five. So he bought it and it became Cali Container property in two thousand and five. Now, he used it for Cali Container use from two thousand and five till now. Now, we bought Cali Container stock. So we own the Cali Container name, which Cali Container owns the property. Me and Donna own Cali Container. So the property has not changed, it's all the same ownership, been the same ownership since nineteen ninety-nine. So besides me and Donna, me and Donna own it now, or?
You are the property owners, correct?
We own Cali Container, and Cali Container owns the property.
You're not even the property owner. You're, you're leasing the property some long time later.
Uh, no, no. I own the corporation, Cali Container.
Okay.
Cali Container owns the property.
Got you.
Okay, I'm with you, I'm with you.
The use of the property is what's important, more so than the ownership.
We have, we have aerial photos from two thousand and six that shows drums are stacked on that property, and we have used that property.
But it's used as storage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Consistently?
Yes. Trails, we park trailers there every day. This is a aerial photo of two thousand and six. This is the big piece of property over here, and these are the trailers where we're going to put the building.
So the trailers are going away when you build the building?
Yes.
You see it, Mr. Potts?
Now, as far as the parking, that's been the same parking since nineteen ninety-nine. Actually, I run Cali Container in two thousand and four. I was there in two thousand and four. That's the reason why I decided to buy Cali Container.
Is there any issues with some of the questions that Robert had for, you know, on his, on the comments of getting them corrected? I mean, you want, you want to speak?
Yes, sir. As I alluded earlier to the board.
Give him a seat.
They, they, for the most part, addressed the site plan changes. The only question that I, the only question that I had remaining was, is it three parcels or one single parcel? And is that a right of way that's accessed by the property? Or is that a right of way that actually don't even belong to the property?
It's a, a right of way that accesses the property. It's, it was gave from the original property. That's where the parking has always been.
And it's a possibility. It's indicated it's a fifty-foot right of way. That's the only thing you see on the, on the plaque that I, that was accessed, nineteen ninety-seven, I think. And I asked this.
Really, if you want to get down to it, it was actually used in nineteen eighty-three when the building was built.
As far.
It used to be a plating company, but that's, that doesn't, that doesn't pertain to us because we didn't start Cali's container till nineteen ninety-nine.
I guess the bigger question, but does it matter if it's one property or three, if they've been using it?
So the, no, it doesn't, if they've been using all three properties. So a nonperforming use can only be on, you can only expand a use that's been a use. And I'm not, I don't have a legal opinion for you on whether or not this is a use that can be expanded on that property, to the extent that it would allow you to use the old setbacks and not the new ones. I don't, I just don't have that answer for you today. I've tried to get that information before so we could be more prepared. I'm sure Mr. Dean has an opinion for you, but I don't have one, as far as whether that property would be nonperforming based on this view.
But they're not asking for a nonperforming use.
They are, because set back, the set backs are for the old zoning and not the new zoning. Because they're expanding a use.
Now, as far as the statute, if we buy additional property, we cannot get a nonperforming use. Long as we own our three parcels and they was before your zoning, we get to keep it.
I'll show it as two in the tax records, can you come, can you come show me?
They added it together when I asked to get one bill for the property.
Okay. It's just, it's that one and that one, right, those two right there.
But it basically like one and two on your bill, right?
Yeah. You can't stretch it too much, it'll go crazy.
See the little yellow lines? There's two right there, and then a big one right there.
Okay, so, so that used to be two, and they just gave you one, okay. Now it makes sense, I just want to make sure.
It's been all three, but if, if you pull it up now, it's just one. It just shows it all one because I asked for one bill.
Well, and, and this tax record system, it shows two.
Me, as part, as planning, I'm curious as to how that happens. Because you're, you're taking a parcel that actually has physical boundary lines.
That picture's not a legal document.
That's not a legal document.
Yeah, no, this is.
All that is, is for tax purposes.
So a legal document's going to reflect three properties.
Right. Got you, yeah. We'll get to you in just a second. You got anything else, Robert? Thank you, Johnny, I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, where are the other parking places?
Yeah, where's the parking?
I figured, I figured this.
And what, and what we're calling maybe an, a, a right of way, where the rest of them are.
Yes, we're right here, there's some, there's some parallel parking, see that line right there?
Yeah, you can see one marked up at the end.
All the way down, pull it down.
There's a four marked up here, it's probably fourteen.
There's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen right there.
Okay.
So all the parking is going to be on one side for both buildings?
It'll be here, here, along the side, and then right here on the end, and then one handicap here.
That's what I meant, but it won't be any on the other side where the other building is.
Yes, ma'am, they're all here in front of the building.
Yeah, thank you, okay.
Yeah.
I got you now.
Thank you, Johnny.
Yes.
I don't have anything else.
I guess Mr. Rhodes likes to speak right quick.
Yeah, sitting on the edge of his seat.
I just want to clarify that parcel issue is, is a big discussion. We submitted it the first time with all three parcels shown. We have that data, we turned that off, it, we're addressing a prior comment, this has been submitted two or three times now. We initially were showing all three parcels. We were asked to take that off, but we can, I'm going to get you, we have that information. I'll just send you all three parcels so everybody can see it real clear, and that won't be an issue then. But addressing the parcel issue, we're also showing the fence that exists, which encircles all three parcels, because that's where they've been operating within the fence. Thank you.
Thank you.
And what about the overflow? The drainage? What about the drainage?
Drainage, the way the, the way the parcel lied, drainage was not a, not a concern. We did, not a lot of, not a, it was not a lot of additional disturbance.
Okay.
It was, looked at through Agribusiness Associates at a minor level because of the lack of a lot of disturbance that's going to be added. As far as the drainage goes, anyway, the parcel lied.
Yeah, well, I really, okay.
So my concern is that Cory is not prepared to give you a legal opinion based on stuff she didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know. But this is all on the one parcel. This is all parcel where the building B is.
Yes, ma'am, that's all three parcels. So the trailers off, the trailers and the blue truck that's been pulled up right there, that's all on that three parcel.
They used to have trailers out there everywhere.
I know.
Yeah, they did, they had them everywhere, they had them everywhere out there.
But a trailer is not a building, it's not really using it, it's not a foundation.
But it was being used. But it was, but it was being used.
The examples that Mr. Dean gave, being landfill and a rock quarry, like, to me, that has definitely changed the property. I don't know that this has changed the property, but again, I haven't looked at this issue at all, because I didn't know that this existed. I can look at it and get back to you that, and the only thing, the only way that's even relevant to this discussion is based off of the setbacks for building B is.
Which could be fixed through zoning and appeals, if you want to go that route.
Are they accurate or not, you know?
Or could be fixed.
So that's what we've been, that's what we've been talking about, and it's, I guess this is now a legal question. I can go back and see whether storage of, outside storage of trailers is a use that would allow you.
The BZA being another option.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer that.
We couldn't operate if it didn't have it.
I understand, but it's based off of, I mean, illegal nonperforming use means that there's a.
Company use, that the company uses.
That's part of the property, I would assume, or else, well, anyway, I don't know the answer.
Is it the reason why you couldn't move it back a little further?
Uh, no, ma'am, to get into the storage and all that stuff, I don't, I don't want to move it by any further.
Our big issue here is just setbacks, correct?
Early now, I think our only.
But he could comply with the fifty-foot setback, if he wanted to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'd say the two options going forward are to, you know, if I can get some confirmation that this would be a use that would allow non, it to be nonperforming and have these old setbacks applied. Or the other option is to have, again, the BZA say that for these topographical or these issues with the property boundaries or something like that, that there's a reason that the setback should be different. I mean, we've, it's the same two options that we've had, though.
You know, pers, personally, you know, I applaud him for going in that area and wanting to build something where it's located and stuff. I mean, it's not, I don't think every business is lined up to go out there and to build in that area out there. You know, personally, that's my opinion, you know, and they've used, and I, I, I'm aware of this, I've been around this Cali Container back and forth. A long time. And at, at times, it's been a mess with all these trailers and stuff there. And then, like I say, I commend him if he wants to come in and do buildings and stuff like that, but you know.
If you can consider, if you would like, you know, if this is a use, in your opinion, that would allow for a nonperforming expansion, you know, you can make that decision. I just don't, I can't give you, I can't say yes, I.
I understand, I, I think the board understands that.
But you can make that decision based off of the other evidence presented to you today.
But Mike, I'm just, just mentioning that I don't think there needs to be any kind of change in the land in order to, take a farm. You don't have many agricultural nonperforming uses because of the protection of another statute here for agricultural uses in Tennessee. But in, in cities, you can have a problem like that. Farmer doesn't really change the land much, probably at all. But, but you, if, if you had farming across a boundary, my dad's a nursery, owns a thousand acres, a thousand acres nursery stock. They cross several boundaries. You know, just because the land hasn't changed, the use as a nursery, growing that nursery stock on the property is a land use and makes that property, if, if the zoning change would make it legally nonperforming. Same thing here, it's being used for the purposes of Cali Container, the manufacturing process. And so it's part and parcel of the land use, regardless of the fact that it's over three parcels of property. And I, I, I don't think there's any case, I don't know personally, it's all a case that, I don't think there's a case that specifies this, right or wrong. It's just, look at the statute, you know, the statute essentially tries to protect, in a very grandiose way, the property owner's rights to, to go forward with these nonperforming uses. And so the ten-foot requirement here is the applicable one because of the nonperforming nature of the use of the land. I don't, I'm telling you, thank you for your thoughts.
Yeah.
We appreciate you.
Yes, sir. You got anything else, Robert?
Everything else is good with the plan except for setback? And the parking question, those two?
Yes, ma'am.
We got that. Oh, the right of way.
I got a couple more signed up on this issue here, and I'm going to let the secretary siphon the name here.
I just really can't read.
Is somebody else here to speak?
Who wrote first, who signed up first?
Who's having the list first to speak tonight?
On this particular issue.
On this particular issue.
It's not on this issue.
Anybody?
Because the last one's George, and he, he spoke. We, we're glad you did, and, and I mean, I see Brown. Oh, is that first one to Brown?
Okay, anybody else on this issue that we're discussing right now?
These are all different issues, okay.
Okay, all right.
I can't give you any other opinion today. If you can rely on what Mr. Dean has presented, that, you know, you're allowed to make, base your decisions off of evidence that's been presented to you today, I just. make, base your decisions off of evidence that has been presented to you today, I just, I wasn't prepared to answer.
Sure, I get that, and I wish.
Can they try to approve it with a condition that goes upon the BZI for?
But it might not have to.
Yeah.
Legally.
If, yeah, I mean, can we wait on her legal opinion or is that? Because, I mean, I'd be, I, I, not that I disbelieve anything Mr. Dean has said, I really would like our attorney to, what do you, what do you?
I think even if they, whether they agree or disagree, whatever, it doesn't change the fact.
I agree.
It's probably the best thing to do with that piece of property, whether it's ten feet or fifty feet.
I agree.
But I don't necessarily want to set a precedent, but.
So the property's been used for that use ever since he's purchased it.
Well, and even before.
Even before that.
For temporary storage.
I can't speak to that, I mean, I don't have that history.
I do.
Yeah.
When was the zoning changed, Michael, in eighteen?
Our zoning changed in 2018.
But you've done it since?
I bought it in 2018, but Cali Container is actually on the property, Mr. Everett owned it in 1999 when he bought it, but he transferred, we claimed it to Cali Container in 2005.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
So Cali Container's owned it since 2005. Now, I own all of Cali's stock, I am the stockholder in Cali Container and I own the name Cali Container, which owns the property.
Right.
In turn, I own the property, but Cali Container truly owns the property, it's needed to Cali Container.
But it didn't come with a change any day or night. 2018, the property was purchased in 2018?
No, the property wasn't purchased in 2018, it was quick claimed to Cali Container in 2005. I only bought Cali Container stock, I only, I own the corporation and the corporation owns Cali.
Only reason I said 2018 is because it came out of your mouth and that's the reason I was, and I didn't hear that.
But since like oh five, it's been Cali Container. It's changed.
It's been operated.
Who was in charge of it, I mean, I saw that when I was looking at the tax records, so I'm comfortable that that oh five or oh six.
Has this use been in use since before 2018, that's the question.
Sure, sure, I know that, yeah.
If you're comfortable that that use has been
Absolutely.
in place on that area where parcel B, then you can expand the business based on the old.
Yeah, it's been used. Any other comments from the staff here? From the board? Not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan with the, under the old zoning of a ten foot setback.
Second.
I have approval in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Did you stand for voting? You don't vote your way?
No, aye.
You said aye. Yeah.
She's quiet sometimes.
Number nine, old business?
Uh, there is one.
Number ten, other business?
Uh, yes, sir, I'd like to introduce some business to the board.
Okay.
Uh, you received a copy of seven point two in your package?
Yeah.
Neighborhood commercial? And in the last one's meeting, we discussed this at length because of the recent board's board. Um, and once again, the board passed that we look into the text and the forms that took us on in relation to what y'all considered perishes to, to land use development and so forth, so we did. And in the neighborhood commercial zone, which you have before, you can't vote on it tonight, it's been brought up to be a, this will be dropped to y'all in December. But what you have in front of you is the addition of two perishes at the very bottom of that. One being single family, the other being two family. We thought that was appropriate to address concerns of the board. We did do research in regards to the zoning text and are confident that that is the only part that has to be changed, has to be changed in our zoning text reflective of different uses. To address the fact that we had several things brought to our attention. And the fact that the neighborhood commercial actually says that it should be beneficial to residents and then you look at the our zoning, our three intent routes that need to be posted adjacent to downtown. So there's, we've looked at it and this is the only text that really needs to be changed in that document. Two actions that have changed to that. And that's what we're proposing to the board.
So then everywhere there's neighborhood commercial.
Those are the ones.
That's correct, so anywhere there's neighborhood commercial, I already said, thank you for bringing that up. Those two uses along with the other perishes should be allowed in, in that, you know, in that picture zone.
Awesome.
Very good.
There was still, the bulk regulations did not change. Stayed the same. But I think barring any other things that you might consider between now and then, you have something similar to this, if not this, coming to the board. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, know that if you get some people in the sound sheet that they'd like to talk to the board outside of that, that they can receive some comments, but I just wanted to alert the board.
Very good.
My, um, once it does become neighborhood commercial, the historical board does not have any, so over the remodeling of the home over the colors and stuff.
And so.
I got that from the historical board in Columbia, of the issues they had.
I would think it would affect it, would it?
Well, I mean, I mean, not that it would affect it, but if they decide that they wanted to change it to a more modern look, there's nothing you can do about it.
Okay, so I, I've looked at that, since we last discussed that, I know there's been.
And that was one of the questions that they had about it, so I just wanted to, here we know that.
Certified by the government. I think that's a little opinion on it, I asked Cory to look at that, boy. Your interpretation of that says that it lies within historic district, it's governed by the historic rules, that's our opinion. Now, I'm, I'm asking Cory with that, but everybody that I've talked to, including experts in the field, tend to agree and direction. So we'll get a little bit.
Very good, thank you.
I wrote that down last time and it is on the top of my list.
But that's why a lot of, a lot of the houses down there have turned into like apartments and stuff because.
Are they in a commercial district?
I will.
It's our opinion, two different things, so there's the base zoning, which can be the same with commercials.
Right.
And then there's a historic overlay, historic overlay addresses design, exterior aesthetics from a couple of views. The zoning addresses the use of use. So if you might have an older historic large home that's been turned into a apartment, but it still looks.
It follows, it follows under the guidelines.
Right, it's, it's two different review boards.
Right, yeah.
Review board and you've got site, so that might be the difference there. But here, what I see is standing out is that you've got these great opportunities that are now mainstream, like the topic being renovation today.
Right.
That you could take advantage of the CN, provide for a single family residence.
Oh, I agree.
I think they can work together really well.
Very good.
Thank you.
And it's a great opportunity to have that commercial which reflects up the store residential allowance as well. Now, this is not brought to the board for one request, I mean, the record to reflect that. It's simply because it has been not only brought to us this past time, but a previous time as well as in relation to
We had another time to talk about, we had one right over here. Yeah.
Having up store residential, that's a cause to the land use for that area. So that, that's a great deal of talk to the board.
Yeah, it's been, it's been before it's called.
And y'all have to look into it.
Yeah, that's fine, we appreciate, we appreciate your work, Robert.
Yes, sir.
I got a couple people here signed up. Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, just a second. You had that board and staff comment?
I just said.
We just got ahead of ourselves.
I'm sorry. No, sir, I don't have any.
All right, now we're gonna get the citizen's comment, we got a couple of people signed up here and forgive us for not being able to make out the name and but, yeah, the first one.
I want to get home and take it back.
Hey, you're fine.
But I thought I was going to go to Mr. Mike's house.
Yeah.
It's already gone, like I, I, I have no comment, this is going in the direction that we want to go in. Thanks you guys for taking the time to listen. I don't know if you've driven by and seen the house that we purchased and the work that we're doing on it, so. All the siding was rotten on the front of it, we're taking that off and replacing that as we speak.
Right.
It's the first time that the, the inside of that home has been seeing daylight since the walls of that home, since 1847. Amazing to look inside, we took off behind the pictures, but we're going back with popper siding. We're also going to insulate it and wrap it with tieback so that it will, you know, keep it like it's supposed to be.
Right.
And painting back the, actually the roof that we put on last week, or week before last, was identical to the roof that was on it back in the 1900s.
Very good.
We're excited about being here.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here.
We appreciate y'all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, it's that next one, somebody brown.
We got, yeah, we had the third one on there, it looked like a doctor's signature. You're good, anybody, anybody else who'd like to speak?
You can all come to December meeting as well.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be, it'd be voted on December on the agenda if you'd like to attend, yeah. If not, I hear a motion for adjournment? Back on Tuesday.
Take it Tuesday.
Back on Tuesday.
I'll make a motion where adjourned.
A motion in the second.
That will be the final decision.
Right.
They go for the board. Jennifer.
Yes, they're gonna go in front of them.
All right, thank y'all, thank you everyone.